Welcome, everyone. This is a work session for Legislative Day number four. And we're going to start with music. Strange music from somewhere else. So we're going to start. We're going to start with Bill 22-25, Long Term and Dementia Care. I think there is someone from Department of Aging to present. Good afternoon.
I am here to say we are getting some more money, which is fantastic, given some of the current environment. So we are receiving a supplemental appropriation for $25,699 for our long-term and dementia care navigation program. This money is going, this additional money is going to fund three memory cafes, which we are partnering with some organizations in the community, educational materials for caregivers and those living with dementia. And we receive these additional funds as part of a reallocation of state funding back out to the local jurisdictions.
Okay. Any questions from the members?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Potoka.
It looks like we have faith partners, ISB, Islamic Society of Baltimore Jewish Community Services, and Tal, I don't know Talmar Memory Cafes.
Talmar, yeah. Talmar is up here in the northern part of the county, and they have a nice outside agricultural area, which they're doing more like a nature-based memory cafe. Yes, but those are our three organizations that we're working with.
Great. Good to know. Some services, I don't think we're able to deliver without partners in the faith-based community. For example, during the pandemic, I know many of the council members participated in the distribution of food. And during the pandemic, we had food and groceries and produce come in, and there's no way we could have distributed it without the faith-based community stepping up. And so this is an important issue, and it's great to partner with these organizations.
Yes, and we were, with these additional funds, we were able to extend for another year. So we were very excited. Yes.
Good job.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Do you want me to do my senior care one while I'm here?
Yes, yeah, while you're up. Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
That's Bill 2325.
Yes.
For senior care.
For senior care, yes. So we are receiving supplemental appropriation of $230,934 for the senior care program. This is a gap-filling services program that helps to pay for services in the home, such as personal care, personal emergency response systems, prescriptions, medications, equipment. And the state took some of the waitlisted money that they had allocated to us for folks on the senior care waitlist, and then gave it out to us to put in our regular allocation. So we're very excited about that.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Housekeeping.
That's okay.
Any questions from the members on senior care? Mr. Secretary, what was your question again? So we were...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I shouldn't have interrupted you like that, but I remember the council had expressed concern in recent months over bringing the administration witnesses back for a second work session if, for the routine matters that where none of the members had any questions about it. And I just, I thought of it when Ms. Mills was testifying on these two things.
Correct. So, yeah, so we've, these bills often, all our bills are heard at two work sessions, but often when we have things like this, we're trying not to tie you guys up to have you come back for a second work session if there are no questions. So...
I think we were scheduled for...
You know, and I guess we can always play it by ear in the sense of if something earth-shattering comes up with these matters, we could always let the department know that we have some more additional questions.
Sure, we'd be happy to reach out and dump their...
Is that amenable to my colleagues that we...
Mr. Chair, I think we talked about creating a consent agenda and adding things like this, where we don't have any questions, that are somewhat routine to that consent agenda. And once it's added to the consent agenda, there's no need to come back to the second hearing. Is that something that you were interested in?
Yes, I think we were, I guess we need to discuss how we do that, but...
We could, I think we can, we can do it by, it would still be on the agenda, and I don't want to get too far afield, and again, my apologies, but I, we can keep it on the agenda, but instead of Ms. Mills being here physically, unless, like you said, something happens between now and April 29th, when this next work session is, we, it would still be on the agenda, we would still raise it, see if any members had any questions, and then move on from that.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Mills. Well, it was, it was good exercise, because we've been talking about this. What we're trying to do for all the department heads is that we don't, we don't necessarily waste your time and have you sitting here for two work sessions on things that are more routine, unless it's something that we feel we're going to need two work sessions on.
Councilman Potoka will still want Major Wydeck to come back twice and wait until last, correct?
Except for Major Wydeck.
Major Wydeck, yes.
He would...
Demoted him.
He would, he would not be part of this. Everybody else.
Note of...
What about Pesterfield? All right. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, we digress. Next up, we have Bill 2425. This one has a little more meat to it. This is the basic services map, and this is Lisa Ikeholz. Sorry.
I would venture, Mr. Chairman, that this might not be as routine as the previous two.
This may not be as routine.
Good afternoon. So I'm Lisa Ikeholz, I'm Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'm here for the 2025 Basic Services Map submission. So this is an annual requirement per zoning regulation 4A. And once again, we're submitting to you the water, sewer, and transportation maps. So these maps are being submitted in the same, exactly as the 2024 maps we provided to council last year. And I can do a quick summary of what's found on the maps.
Great.
So for the transportation map, there are 11 intersections that are rated as failing. These are all at state road intersections. These are the same intersections presented to you last year, and we again changed the intersection that originally rode in York Road from an F to a C based on our analysis. For the water basic services maps, there are once again no items identified as deficient. For the sewer basic services maps, it's the same map that you received last year, but we have made a lot of progress towards changing that map that you'll see next year. We've completed many projects to eliminate overflow structures, and we have actually closed nine of the 10 overflow structures shown on the map, but that occurred in January of this year, which was after the maps were prepared. So we are in a phase of evaluating to make sure those projects are effective, and we hope next year that you will see very different maps submitted. In the Perry Hall area, we are about to bid later this year, two projects, the Richland Manor Pump Station and Richland Manor Force Main, which will eliminate the area USC identified there, and that is associated with the Richland Manor wastewater treatment plant that we are eliminating from the system. In the Brooklynville area, that's near Joppa and Falls, we are working with a consultant to finalize design that will allow us to bid and construct the relief sewer that will eliminate that area from the map. We expect that that construction project will start in very late in 2025. As has always been the case, DPW will continue to review all development plans for their impact on the sewer system, the water system, and the transportation system. We treat those as individual plants that come in, and we analyze the full system when they're submitted. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Catch.
Yeah, just a quick question. What is the, are we going to have another hearing on this in two weeks, or will we be voting on it this coming Monday?
Mr. Secretary is going to cover that.
Mr. Catch, we have another work session scheduled for the bill on April the 29th. We also have a dedicated, specific public hearing scheduled on that date for the basic services maps as required by the regulations. So in a sense, there will be two bites at that apple in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the members? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ikeholz. Sorry, I butchered your name coming up.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker.
Yes, we have one speaker.
Yes. The registered speaker is Renee Hamidi, who is here in person.
Renee's here. Good afternoon, Ms. Hamidi. Seem to be with us a lot lately.
She's a lot.
We are.
It is our pleasure.
I hope this work session doesn't go until 10:00 PM, though. I'm still recovering.
I'm thinking we're not going six hours today.
I only have two pages, so it won't be my fault.
Oh, good.
Good afternoon. My name's Renee Hamidi. Two years ago, you agreed to change the sewer basic services map to reflect that an area in the Jones Falls Sewer Shed that had been marked as an area of concern by DPWT was actually deficient, according to studies done by consultants hired by the county in its efforts to abide by the terms of the 2005 consent decree. Last year, without making any improvements to the area in question, DPWT submitted maps that showed the area to be once again an area of concern. And once again, you changed the map to show that the area was deficient. Have the pipes been replaced? No. But this time, I'm not asking you to declare that one area deficient. There have been decisions in development cases that have deemed a much larger area of the Jones Falls Sewer Shed to be problematic, extending well south of the deficient area all the way to Lake Roland. $10 million has been allocated to make repairs to pipes around and under Lake Roland. $10 million is a lot of money. It indicates that there is most definitely a problem, and it's not just six or eight pipes in Brooklynville that need to be replaced. At this point, whether it's new development or redevelopment, as emphasized in the master plan, there's no getting around the fact that some of our sewer lines just can't handle the load. And that's without even mentioning the homes and businesses inside the Erdle that are now on well-inseptic, that probably should be on public water and sewer. I know it's a big ask, but it's a health issue. A big chunk of the Jones Falls Sewer Shed should be declared deficient so that no development can take place until the sewers are able to handle that load. I'm a resident of the Jones Falls Sewer Shed, and that's why I'm here, not representing Valley's Planning Council. I personally think you don't want to be the people that county residents think about when they experience a sewer backup in their basement. Questions?
Councilman Potoka.
A couple of questions, Ms. Hamidi. One is, last year when we met, and I know we have a meeting coming up, but you provided me with metrics of sewage load and how it fared during wet conditions, during dry conditions, and how our, how our pipes reacted in terms of capacity. Is your concern based on new numbers of pipes and the percentage of capacity and how much leakage there was, or is it based on development issues that are occurring? Or both?
Both. You know, my concern is that the pipes around Lake Roland haven't been repaired or replaced, so those numbers are still, may still be applicable, but also I'm concerned about adding additional development to that area that's failing.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, do you have a new set of numbers, or are we looking at the numbers from last year?
No new numbers. I don't have access to new numbers.
And just a comment, this is related to our work session that went very, very late.
Yes.
But this is also, you know, this is one of the issues, what we're dealing with in our discussions about strengthening the Erdle, is that the sewage load goes through our older neighborhoods that are typically inside the Beltway. And I talked about Lockarn, it has two, two pipes, two parallel pipes that are not handling, this is not a benefit to Lockarn, except that if there's a leakage, it usually leaks, you know, in these areas. And so, you know, we really have to be careful about how we address sewage and the capacity to handle a sewage load, because, you know, we can't have our only amenity to inner Beltway neighborhoods to be a brand-new sewer line to handle sewage load from other parts of the county. So that's just an editorial. You don't have to answer that. An observation. But thank you for coming in and speaking.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hamidi. Any other questions? Why word? Okay. I'm going to skip around a little bit here. We're going to get through the fiscal matters. So we're going to skip to, next up is Joseph Jackson, Assistant County Attorney in Real Estate Compliance, about 3004 Edwards Avenue, acquisition of a drain and utility easement. Mr. Jackson, how are you today?
I'm well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Mr. Chairman and council members, the administration is requesting approval of a contract to acquire an easement access spanning approximately 3,692 square feet for $5,560 for the Jennifer Branch Relief Sewer Project. The Jennifer Branch Relief Sewer Project is included in the federal consent decree, which involves the construction of approximately 6,000 feet of relief sewer line along Jennifer Branch Stream between Hartford Road and Northwind Road. Johnson, Mirman, and Thompson has been contracted by the Department of Public Works and Transportation to perform the real estate services for the project, and the value of the project, as I believe I mentioned, is $5,560 for this particular aspect.
Councilman Marks.
Thank you. This, this project is in my district in the Carney area. Thank you for your work getting us to this point. Thank you.
Any other questions from the members? Thank you, sir. Thank you. That was easy. Okay. Next up, we have Chris Martin from OIT. Chris has two different items for us. Contract with Motorola Solutions, software installation and maintenance for fire station alerting system, and then we have some more cooperative agreements for CATS Plus. Mr. Martin, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council Chair, council members. The first fiscal matter is a multi-year agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for a fire station alerting system, utilizing a competitively bid and awarded contract issued by Metropolitan Washington Council of Government. The initial contract term will begin upon council approval and continue to May 18th, 2027, and has one three-year renewal option, which would take it out to 5/18/2030. The Baltimore County Fire Department needs to implement a new fire alerting system, which will provide standard non-emergency and emergency display information. It will provide new alerting system features across to a new fire station with the ability to expand to all fire stations in the future. A new state-of-the-art Catonsville Fire Station Number Four, which will be located at 736 Emerson Avenue, and will be the first station to use the new alerting system. There's three associated costs with this to note. The first is $283,553. This is for the backend system that IT manages, and it's installing the backend systems in the computer-aided dispatch systems, and it's expected to take about six months. The second associated cost is $145,853, and that is specifically for implementation in the Catonsville Station. Implementation to the system is dependent on the completion of the building. And then the third associated cost is $53,459, and that's the first annual warranty cost. The first-year warranty will be due one year after go-live of the backend system. $662,326 is the estimated total cost of implementation, five years of maintenance costs, and the Catonsville Fire Station Alerting is all wrapped up into that amount. This does not include any additional sites. Each additional site may cost more or less than a Catonsville Station depending on fire's requirements.
Councilman Jones, did you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the conversation with the administration and bringing me up to date on what the plans are for the firehouse. Excited to be, I would say pilot, but only because it's the first one, but by no means in the sense that we don't expect this to work, but also be replicable in other jurisdictions. I think it just so happens, we're lucky enough to be the next one in the queue for a new fire station. But from your understanding and the experience that you all have had, this will be implemented and can be potentially in other jurisdictions and other fire stations, but this is just going to be done at this new, new one, because it's in the planning and design phase right now.
That is correct. The, the previous system used is deprecated technology. It's time to, to move on to a, a better managed system. And so that's why we're putting a lot of focus on the backend of this, is to build it out on our side so that we can expand out to the future relatively quickly to other stations.
Look forward to supporting this and your efforts to expand to other jurisdictions as well.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Mr. Martin, this system, I mean, I understand Catonsville is going to be a new station. It was, is there special systems in the firehouse that are required, like what?
Sure. So when a call comes into the fire station, this is the system that sits there that turns the lights on in sleeping quarters. It sends the announcements out so they can hear to dispatch. It even goes as far as printing off a tear sheet that firefighters take. It puts information up on a monitor. This is how they know when they get a 911 call to leave the station, where to go, and how to, how to report out.
And then we're, we're looking to roll this out to all our stations at some point?
At some point, correct. Every, I mean, it just goes along with every IT system that we have to future plan for replacement, and this gives us that ability, that the old system that's there is not replaceable as is. So this new system allows us to go through and, and replace all those older systems to this new technology. And it brings quality of life to our first responders, right? Instead of a harsh alarm going off at 3:00 in the morning, this system will slowly bring the lights up to a more manageable experience for them. And a lot of this is driven by a number of requests they have directly.
Neat technology. So next up, we have the CATS Plus continuation. Yeah, oh, yeah. Sorry, Councilman Crandall. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just out of curiosity, Mr. Martin, 911 call comes in to 911 Center.
Yep.
Right? What happens after, after that?
Sure. So the call takers in the 911 Center, and I'm speaking on behalf of 911 for part of this, so if I make a mistake, excuse me, but call comes into a call taker. That call taker then takes that information and sends it over to a dispatcher. That dispatcher could either be a fire or police dispatcher, in this case, fire. And then that fire dispatcher determines what the response will be, whether that's multiple units from different stations, from the same station, and it's all dependent on a set of business rules that they've developed. It could be that a motor vehicle accident requires certain types of dispatch. It could be that if there's a rescue, they need specific equipment. And so after they make that determination, they go through the process in the computer-aided dispatch system to send the alerts off to the station and to dispatch those folks out. And then those folks continuing to use the computer-aided dispatch system, it now gets sent over to their apparatus or their vehicle that they're driving, and it gives everything from instructions to details to driving directions. And so this, this backend computer-aided dispatch system really ties the entire process from start to finish together. And the alerting system is a plug-in from the same manufacturer that, which is Motorola, that handles that in-station portion of that whole process.
And this generally happens, this whole scenario, it happens within...
Seconds.
Seconds.
Yep.
Yeah. Amazing.
Hundreds of times a day.
Right. Just because my wheels are turning with the advent of AI, do you foresee maybe that even getting faster? And the, and the decisions that maybe dispatch would, would make would be...
Potentially.
I understand AI is not there yet, but...
I would, I would...
I don't want to risk lives for a...
Cautiously optimistic.
To be an early adopter of AI and risking lives, no.
The lives are the thing that we always turn to, that there's, when human lives are at stake. I think we need to build that trust out with AI a little bit further. But with everything with AI that we implement, there's always a human component check in the backend. So do I think right now, within the next year, there's probably not going to be an AI component, but as we start to explore AI and other integrations, I'm sure on a five-year strategic plan, we'd be looking at opportunities to streamline that.
That human element is important, because, you know, there's a, there's a human being on the other end of that phone, and often 911 is in contact with both the person reporting the incident and needs help, and, and dispatch all at the same time.
In general, I am of a firm believer that AI is not here to replace positions. Like you said, that human element is crucial in working with those callers that come in and even connecting with the station. Where we plan to utilize AI will always be around supplementing and making work more accessible to employees. But as you said, there is a life-or-death situation in most of these calls, and that's where we're very hesitant to make a promise that AI is going to come in and solve the problems.
Right. Well, here's a salute to our, all of our first responders.
Absolutely.
Thanks for, thanks for your thoughts and being so thoughtful about it. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Speaking of which, in your district, Councilman Crandall, we have the Sparrow's Point Firehouse will be coming, I don't know how long after Catonsville, but would that potentially be the second install, or is this more, we're going to try it at Catonsville, see how it goes, and then...
My vision on this is any net new builds or any, you know, fully reconstructed builds would look at this as the future solution.
Okay. Potentially we'll be doing that for Sparrow's Point as well.
Agreed.
57. Okay. All right.
I think Councilman Jones might...
Councilman Jones, sorry, there you are. I'm sorry, I need to look at the screen.
I know, I was going to speak, I guess wanted to thank Mr. Martin for being here, and I guess for sitting here, having been in charge of the 911 Center for a few years, I can tell you, Councilman Crandall, these folks that answer these 911 calls are extremely skilled, and Mr. Martin did a great job of explaining the process, but let me guess, say this, when somebody calls 911, and that person picks up the phone, in those cases, within a few seconds, they can tell what type of call it is. I used to tell people, we're not Baskin-Robbins. We don't have 31 flavors. We have fire engines, ambulances, paramedic units, and the ladder trucks and squads. We don't have that much. So within a few seconds, while that person is still talking to the person who called, they've already typed in the code that determines the dispatch, it's already gone over the dispatch, and they're actually dispatching the equipment while the person is still talking. So a lot of times, people don't understand, when that dispatcher is talking, when that call taker is talking to a person, and they're telling them to make sure the lights are on, make sure the door is open, and, and giving them instructions on CPR if necessary, or whatever the case may be, a lot of people don't know that that equipment is already on the street. They've already, within a few seconds, they've diagnosed what's going on, sent the information on, and they quit. on and the equipment, the wheels are turned. So I look forward to seeing how AI could possibly make it faster, but right now, we have some very skilled people with tremendous experience and they hear, I mean, there's an actual system, there's a system that you go through. If you did not know, you would ask all these questions. It's called Emergency Medical Dispatch. We have Emergency Medical Dispatch where it's a sheet or series of questions you would ask to get you to what you're going to send. But the skilled person with a lot of experience, they know the codes by heart and soon as a person starts to talk, they've been typed it in the same. So then if there's any additional information they can tell by riding down the road on the radio. So I just figured I'd give you that little commentary. You're starting to get me excited when you talk about these things because a lot of people, when we think about first responders, let me just say that nobody does anything unless the 911 Center gets it right. They don't get it right, fire, the police, nobody's moving. So anyway, that's my commentary.
Thanks, Counselman. I was heartened to hear that the human element is more important than technology. And I've heard it said before and I've said in these chambers that 911 call takers, I don't even think that's their title, but they, they are the first of the first responders.
Yep.
They're part of the team.
Better believe it. Very important part of the team because if they don't get it right, nobody's moving.
Got you. Thank you, Counselman.
Thank you, Counselman Jones.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Counselman Catch.
Yeah, are we talking about the volunteer fire companies as well, getting these systems?
So as of right now, this is the focus for the career stations because OIT supports their specific alerting systems. Volunteers, and from my understanding, are independent companies. There is the potential that if they have an interest in it, it could be expanded out to them. There's nothing limiting that from happening at this time. Obviously, budget, that's always a limit, but in terms of like technology, there's nothing stopping this from being implemented into volunteer houses as well.
I mean, it appears to be an enhanced system compared to what we have, so I mean, they would benefit from it, is that true?
I believe so.
And for Counselman Jones, you were talking about Baltimore County, not Anne Arundel because I don't think Anne Arundel has computers, do they?
In fact, they, they do. And I look forward to hearing more about this system, Mr. Martin, because to be quite frank, to your point, Counselman Catch, a lot of these items that were mentioned, you can buy them at high, sort of off the shelf, some of the items. Not a complete system, but the idea, lights would go on or doors would open and those things are nothing new. I used to work and wear volunteer fire company will buy extra equipment and set it in front of the system. So when that system goes off, they would get a lot of these functions that we're talking about today, like the run sheet, the rip off and take with you and populate the computer and the screen, these things. This stuff goes back a long way, but I can't wait to see how the new system will work and whether it enhances it. But yeah, we had computers down there.
You did?
Yeah, 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 believe it or not. They were all like little Macs.
Internet and everything?
Ah, you're asking an awful lot now. I'm not sure about that. Yeah, of course, the internet. I want to get no phone calls.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Counselman Catch. Mr. Martin, you want to go on to the CATS plus program?
Sure. So this is round three for CATS plus at council. This is for 18 contracts and this is a fiscal matter for the county to establish cooperative agreements utilizing the State of Maryland Department of Information Technology Consulting and Technical Services. CATS plus for staffing solutions as needed. The contractor shall provide these services for supplemental staff engagements using one or more of the 115 labor categories. The county solicited a TORFP to all the master contractors under the State of Maryland, CATS plus master contract, incorporating additional requirements as required by Baltimore County, Maryland. In 2016, the county issued RFP number one, P145 for information technology consulting and technical service. 24 contracts were awarded, all of which had a seven-year term with 120-day period renewal option. The contracts will become effective when executed by the county and shall continue through April 21st, 2028, the initial term. Incumbrances will be made whenever staffing solution services are procured as part of the TORFP. A purchase order will be issued to the awarded contractor at the time with the funding information.
Great. Questions?
Awesome.
I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thanks for coming in today. Next up, we have Mr. Bob Smith, Director of Wreckitton Parks for State of Maryland Criminal Justice Information System Fingerprint-Based Background Check Reports. Director Smith, how are you?
I'm well, sir. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, council. The administration and department is requesting approval of a contract with the State of Maryland Criminal Justice Information Services Central Repository, or SEJIS, to provide fingerprint-based background check reports for non-public safety job candidates and occasional employment applicants. Contract commences June 18th, 2025, continues for four years through 2029. Contract provides that compensation may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services for the entire contract term. Department advises that the estimated compensation total is $96,000 for the entire four-year term. Contractor will provide fingerprint-based background check reports for non-public safety job candidates and occasional employment applicants. The county will conduct the fingerprinting using our wet dry fingerprinting scanners and submit those fingerprints to SEJIS. SEJIS will compare the digital fingerprint scans against criminal history records maintained by Maryland and the FBI and then send criminal history, criminal history record information to the department or to the county's Office of Human Resources typically within hours. Department advises that mostly the fingerprints, its own potential employees, but has occasionally assisted with other agencies, including BCPS as needed. OHR generally fingerprints other non-public safety employees. Department advises approximately 3,000 background checks will be performed across all county agencies during the entire contract term. The county will pay the contractor $31.25 per background check. The contract commences on June 18th, 2025 and provides compensation may exceed the amount appropriate for these services. Department requested that the proposed contract be designated as a non-competitive 902F award. The department advised that SEJIS is the only provider of fingerprint-based CHRI in Maryland. We're seeking approval for the contract.
Counselman Patoka, I mean, you had a question.
Mr. Smith, just a quick question.
Sir.
I just want to make sure I understand. This is not for fingerprinting, fingerprint checking of volunteer coaches?
That is correct. That is a different contract, Sports Engine or NCSI it's classified as, and that is a portal by which the volunteers enter their information into it, which I'm sure you have done as a volunteer.
Done every year.
That is different than the SEJIS background check, which is done for employees.
So we don't do any fingerprint checking on that?
No, sir.
Submit information and I don't know who does the background check.
It's a, Sports Engine is the company. Oddly enough, I think that bill is coming up in a couple sessions.
I usually don't hear anything and I think no news is good news in that situation.
We publish every week, the updated list of those approved on our website, so.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll look for my name then.
We can check for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Counselman Patoka. Any other questions from the members? Counselman Jones, Catch, you good? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you coming in.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're going to, Mr. Secretary, if I may, I'm going to jump to Counselman Crandall's Bill, Bill 2525, Restrictions on Parking Commercial Vehicles in the Essex Commercial Revitalization District. Counselman? Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. Several years ago, the council passed similar legislation and in fact, this would amend that current legislation to add a specific area of the Essex Revitalization District to prohibit commercial parking. I think it's any vehicles over three quarters of a ton, Mr. Secretary? Three quarters of a ton, which includes the large passenger vans. If you know that area of Eastern Avenue, it, large, there is angled head in parking only right off of Eastern Avenue, which is a busy road and the large trucks there really create a visibility problem as well as obstructing views of the facades. And there's been a lot of improvements to the Eastern Avenue corridor. And I know the Essex Development Corporation would like to show off some of these improvements and sort of highlight the commercial area and would like to keep the view open as well as the parking spots available for patrons of the businesses in that corridor. The original legislation was for the Dundalk Commercial Revitalization District and the Historic Shopping Center. And I believe Counselman Young added Arbutus, the commercial, the CRD in Arbutus. I think you added that to that original legislation. So this sort of piggybacks onto that legend, that sort of, it does piggyback onto that legislation and it's something that I found to be very welcomed in the, in the community and those working to revitalize Essex. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. Would that be police enforced? Or? Or parking enforcement? Yes, it's on the roads to police, yeah. Right, okay. Any other questions from the members? Do we have any speakers on this bill? No? Okay. We'll move on then. Okay, next up, we will, I think we're going to go to, go to miscellaneous business. Megan Benjamin, planner from the Department of Planning, to talk about the approval of Maryland Rural Legacy Plan applications. We have three of those. Hello, Ms. Benjamin, how are you? Secretary, I'm all over the place.
Good evening.
I'm following any order.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of council. The administration is requesting approval by the county council of Resolution 20-25 to approve and prioritize three FY26 rural legacy area applications submitted to the Maryland Rural Legacy Program. The county has five rural legacy areas total. This year, three areas submitted applications to the state. All three of these areas have been very successful in working with landowners to acquire easements and then monitor the easements to ensure that the restrictions and obligations are met. The department considered several factors, including completion of projects, environmental protection, public benefits, threat and sponsor input for this ranking. The state requires the counties with more than one rural legacy area prioritize their applications. The application for the Manor Rural Legacy Area includes an expansion of the area boundaries to incorporate lands to the north, up to Pennsylvania, and the east to Hartford County, as well as to the west to align with the Gunpowder Rural Legacy Area boundary. There's also a small expansion to the south to incorporate a potential property adjacent to Jarrettsville Pike. So the department recommends approval of all three applications with the following priority order. One is the Piney Run Rural Legacy Area, which incorporates portions of Council Districts two, three, and four. Second is the Manor Rural Legacy Area, which is within Council District three. And third is the Gunpowder Valley Rural Legacy Area, which is in Council District three as well. The ranking will be forwarded to the state Rural Legacy Advisory Committee, which reviews applications and makes recommendations to the Rural Legacy Board comprised of the Secretaries of the Department of Natural Resources, Department of Planning, and Department of Agriculture. The Rural Legacy Board will determine the funding levels subject to approval of the State Board of Public Works.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Benjamin? Online, okay. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, next up, we're going to go to Resolution 2125. This is from Councilman Marks. Opposition of Overhead Transmission Lines, Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project. Councilman Marks.
You may recall that last summer, we passed Resolution 3724, which encouraged Baltimore Gas and Electric Company to, quote, lessen the impacts of the Brandon Shore Retirement Mitigation Project on affected communities and residential neighborhoods to the greatest extent possible and to bury transmission lines underground where feasible, especially in parkland and rural areas. There's a lot more to that resolution, but it passed unanimously through the county council. Originally, I had submitted another resolution which would state the outright opposition of the county council to this project. I understand there are opposing viewpoints perhaps to that resolution. I have scaled it back simply to say that BGE must address some titling issues along its path before active work commences on this project. I think that's a fair request and that's, that's the amendment. Mr. Boswick has actually a copy of the amendment, so it scales down the original resolution. That's it. I think we have two, two speakers.
We have one speaker for this item and it's Polly Afuano, who's here in person.
Hi, Mr. Clark, signed up for the round.
I think Clark is for.
Just, we should ask him.
Okay, well. 2525.
Good evening, Council Chair, council members.
How are you, sir?
I am doing well and yourself?
Good.
So regarding the Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project, we do welcome continued discussions with our stakeholders and customers on ensuring that our infrastructure projects strike a balance between value and impact. This balance is our focus when planning work, including the Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project, and we appreciated the input engagement from customers at more than 22 planned outreach events focused on this work. This project, which BGE undertakes at PJM's direction to ensure the reliability of Central Maryland's electricity grid, is the most economical and least disruptive solution to the consequences of the planned closure of Talon Energy. Brandon Shores Power Plant. This project will pave the way for a more sustainable and reliable energy future. Importantly, the project will be constructed entirely on existing BGE right-of-way, minimizing any additional disruptions to the environment and the community. Council Marks's resolution fails to consider the ramifications for his constituents and for all BGE customers if this overhead transmission solution is not pursued. In reviewing alternatives, it was determined that underground transmission lines would cost five to 10 times more than overhead solutions and would take significantly longer to construct. In this situation, an extended construction period would mean that electricity customers would pay the monthly $15 million reliability must-run fee to Talon Energy to keep their local generation plants operational beyond the planned in-service date for the project of December 2028. This dynamic underscores the long-term financial benefits of the project as planned. Critically, an underground solution cannot be built on our rights of way and would require the acquisition of additional land through the nearly 40-mile project area. Under our proposed project, all transmission line work will take place on BGE's existing right-of-way, where overhead transmission lines have been in place for decades, thereby requiring no additional disruptions to communities and rural green spaces. BGE has met with stakeholders and impacted customers 168 times at public meetings, open houses, and individual homes to answer questions, address concerns, and ensure transparency throughout this process. Our Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation- Our Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project website, which is goodenergyinprogress.com, has recorded 10,139 views as of April 1st. We welcome all comments, including the public's participation at the PSC's April Public Comment Hearings scheduled in White Marsh.
Councilman Marks?
Lots to respond to.
Lots to respond to.
First of all, Polly, and you've, you have been very helpful on other issues, so this is not directed personally to you. But the council unanimously adopted this resolution in July 1st, asking for BGE to try to lessen the impacts. Can you identify anything BGE has done to lessen the impacts since we made that request?
Well, we did look at some alternatives, and we did mention that in here in the statement I just read. Some of those alternatives would take us outside of our right-of-way, which would add additional acquisition and cost, and not to mention time, which would also contribute to that $15 million monthly RMR that would be in place and paid for by our, your constituents and our customers.
You looked at them, but did you come up with any, any solutions anywhere along this 35-mile route?
Actually, no. This, this was the most, and let me back up a second here. This route was chosen by PJM, and this route is the most financially and most economical route for the power lines.
Okay, I'm glad you mentioned PJM because PJM, which is kind of the regional network, right, of utility companies, it spans a massive area.
Thirteen states.
Yeah, north, tower northeast. They actually have a project underway in the Midwest, the SOO Green HVDC Link, in which they are burying 350 miles of utility line underground. It generates 2,100 megawatts, and it runs from Mason City, Iowa to Plano, Illinois. How, how is PJ, PJM able to do it there and not here?
I wouldn't be able to speak for PJM. I don't represent them.
You know, I, I know undergrounding costs money. I know there's been some concerns among members here about that, but just for the record, undergrounding does have benefits. It lessens the frequency of repairs, right? You don't have the issues of lightning strikes and, and bird damage. It doesn't have any electric field pressure to the public. And undergrounding still has some magnetic field exposure, but the impact does, does fall away as you move away from it. So there are benefits. I mean, I guess what's frustrating to me is we have an example of a PJM project in another part of the country where the undergrounding has occurred, and we don't see any of those best practices done here. I mean, the council asked for impacts to be lessened, and BGE didn't do anything, as far as I can tell. You looked at the things, but you didn't make any concrete changes.
Yeah, and again, I'll reiterate that this project was designed by PJM so that, you know, again, I don't represent PJM, but it sounds like we would probably need to.
I understand. And, and again, you have done good work for us, for all of us in the past, and a lot of this is not directed to you personally. I want to bring up the public hearing. There's a public hearing scheduled for April 23rd at the White Marsh Volunteer Fire Company.
That's correct.
I understand BGE arranged that public hearing. BGE picked a location that has very little space to meet at. And my understanding is now that the White Marsh Volunteer Fire Company doesn't want to host, host this meeting because there's not enough space for everyone. It is an incredible disservice to the community that has been anticipating this hearing, that they now have conflicting information about whether there's going to be a hearing the 23rd or not. The people opposed to this project have printed up signs, I know you all have seen those. Why in the world BGE couldn't have found a better location is beyond me for this hearing. So it looks like the hearing's going to have to be moved, moved, moved ahead a month. I just think we could have done a lot better with scheduling that hearing.
So actually, Councilman Marks, we have made arrangements. We selected an overflow site, which will be utilizing for additional attendees to the, to the hearing. And we've worked out an arrangement with that, that fire department to, to pursue.
The overflow site's Columbus Gardens, but my understanding is that White Marsh Volunteer Fire Company doesn't want to have a hearing anymore because they're anticipating all these people coming to a very small community room. I, I just don't know why we couldn't have picked a better location. It's beside the point. I've made my point here. I think the resolution is scaled down and addresses the titling issues that I think do need to be addressed before active work begins on the site. Thank you.
Polly, could you address the titling? Councilman Marks put the titling issues in this resolution. How does that affect the timeline on getting that?
I haven't seen the version that's got the titling issues on it. The, the version that I pulled up this afternoon did not include that in there, but I can definitely take a look at that and see if we can.
Is that what you want?
And see if we can't get an answer for you. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Councilman.
One, one more thing, just, just to put this on the record, because I've also made the request to the Public Service Commission. In my opinion, if this is rescheduled, a notice should be sent to all the property owners along that route of the rescheduled meeting date and time. I think that's appropriate. If, if any of us own property along the route, we'd want to know about when that's rescheduled. And I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Noted. Councilman, did you ever, okay, Councilman Jones?
Yes, I do have a question for Polly. Thank you so much for being here. I'm a little confused, and maybe you can help me. I, I know we just went through this whole issue with the Piedmont Reliability Project and where they're going to run lines through Baltimore County and other places through people's property. A lot of it is probably, it sounds like it's going to be at the, against the wishes of its property owner. And I just want to make sure I understand. You're, you're saying that what you're going to do is going to be on your right-of-way?
That's correct, Councilman Jones. Everything that we're going to construct is in our existing right-of-way, where there is an existing line currently.
So you're, you're basically adding another line? Or how many, how many lines are there, and how many are you going to?
There's one line there now, and we'll be adding a second line within the existing right-of-way.
Okay, so does that involve taking any, taking anyone's property against their wishes?
No, sir.
Okay, so, okay, I guess wanted to make sure I understood. All right. So the only issue here, I wasn't sure about the titling issue, but the only issue is if, if you were to, Councilman Marks, are you asking that they bury the new line or the new line and the old line as they are?
My amendment only asks that the titling issue be resolved. The council previously last July asked for us, BGE, to look into the feasibility of burying lines. We all agreed to that. Appears they've done nothing concrete to advance that, but the amendment, the, the legislation as I am proposing, it only asks for that titling issue to be addressed. That's it.
I guess I'm still confused about the titling issue. What is the titling?
My understanding, and I, we probably have a speaker who can address this as well, my understanding is that some of the original documents going back decades reference the fact that a transmission line be placed on the right-of-way, not multiple lines.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So hence, the, the titling issue would have to agree to a second line? And who would that, who would agree to that?
That would be a private issue, right, Mr. Boswick?
Yes, I think it would be if there was a dispute as to the extent or degree to which BGE is entitled to utilize the rights-of-way that it has. That's something that would need to be, if there was a dispute on that, that, that would need to be either, that would be, need to be addressed and then either settled or somehow adjudicated.
Mr. Chairman.
It would be a private dispute.
Before you, can I, can I say one more question? What, what happens if you don't run this additional line? Polly, I'll ask you.
Well, hypothetically, I guess if, if we delay that RMR continues until a alternative solution is discovered, again, that's $15 million a month that our ratepayers would be, our customers and your constituents would be paying until a new solution could be determined that would allow Talon Energy to eventually be able to close its doors.
I'm just curious, do you know how much each ratepayer is going to pay? When we say 15 million, what, what is, what is that per ratepayer? Do you have any idea?
Based on historic records, we're estimating currently because of the, because Brandon Shores was in our area, our, our ratepayers would be paying about 70% of that 15 million. And that comes up to about $4.50, current estimate, per, per, per bill.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Catch.
Thank you very much. With resolving the property issue, wouldn't that, wouldn't that go to the Public Service Commission to make the decision, or would it go to, to court? You know, with the property owners and the, the documents that call for just one line, and now we need two lines on property that's restricted to one line. So is it Public Service Commission or the courts that would settle any disputes like this?
That I do not have the answer for, sir.
Uh, our secretary, any idea?
I do not know either, Mr. Catch. I don't know whether it would go through an administrative process or, or the courts. It sound, it, if I were to guess, I would say it would go through an administrative process first.
And, and that administrative process would be with the PSC?
That would be my best guess.
And if that is the process, then if it was to be appealed, that would go to the judicial system?
If there was a right of appeal, yes.
If there's a right of appeal, okay. Um, okay, I have a lot more questions, but I can talk to you about them. I mean, this, this, all this situation is causing a lot of consternation and, and heartburn in, in Baltimore County and Carroll County and Frederick County, et cetera. And, you know, I, a lot of precedents can be set here which aren't necessarily very positive precedents. And so I'm really very interested in the role of the Public Service Commission and the role of the courts. So thank you very much.
Councilman Crandall, did you have something, or Councilman Marks?
I did, just quickly. Mr. Afano, you mentioned the, you know, the $15 million until we can get a replacement for Brandon Shores. Is that BGE customer universe-wide, or are those specific customers in a, in a specific region that see that, that rate hike?
That would be the, all customers within the BGE territory.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilman Marks?
Again, I will reiterate that there are some long-term savings to undergrounding lines. And again, I, I know there's a cost if we do this throughout the whole network, but the less, the lessening of the frequency of repairs to the line, you know, you have birds running into lines, you have lightning strikes, et cetera. I mean, there are some benefits to undergrounding lines. That's all.
Councilman Patoka?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Afano, so it's $15 million if we do not bury.
That's correct, based, based on, yeah, that's, that's the retire, that's the RMR cost to keep Brandon Shores, Brandon Shores open until this line is, is built.
What would be the cost? Do you have a sense of what the cost would be if we went underground?
Five to 10 times more.
And that would be absorbed by all the ratepayers?
That is correct.
So say five to 10 times more, so if it's, I'm going to use easy math, say it's $5 a month. So that would take a $5 a month, the surcharge. Isn't the right word, Mr. Boswick, a surcharge? $5 a month if it's five times. And then if it's 10 times, that's, would be $25 a month, or $50 a month.
$50.
And so I just wonder, and, and just trying to think through the entire universe of ratepayers and how that impacts all of us. I just wanted to bring that out because I wanted to understand the cost. I don't know where I am on this, but just wanted to understand it. Thank you, Mr. Afano.
So the, the calculation that you just made would be until Brandon Shores is closed, correct?
Would there be, what would be, would there be any costs? So it'd be, so if it closes in '27?
'28.
'28. So it'd be somewhere around three years of 15, either $5, $25, or $50 a month, depending on how it all. And I know there's no exact science to it because you don't know what the pathway would be, and there's a lot of unknown, unknown variables right now. So, and that would be until 2028. And then what would happen after 2028?
That's, that's what I was trying to clarify there. So the RMR, that $15 million a month is to keep Brandon Shores open until December of 2028. The cost of the project would increase five to 10 times more, and then that would be distributed over probably a, a timeframe of about 50 years. So the...
Well, I see. So the 15 million would only be until 2028?
That's correct, or until the project was, is built.
Or, or if we're putting, first of all, I don't know that the resolution says anything about underground lines, but let's say we did, that's going to take longer than running lines on a tower.
That's correct.
So that means Brandon Shores has opened another two, three years at 15 million per month, per clip for everyone.
Correct.
Not just the ratepayers of Kingsville, who are the ones who want...
That's correct.
The underground lines. Because I, these lines go through Rosedale, you know, Rosedale...
And Dundalk.
And Dundalk, you know, do, do we get, do we get underground lines there too? You know, if Kingsville does, why doesn't the people of Rosedale? Well, you know, you say that, but everybody's got to pay for this, and people are already crying about, I mean, we've had one of the worst winters. Power's up, gas is up. We just keep adding to the cost by, you know, and I think there are people in Kingsville that might be able to afford this, but we have people all over that are at the end of their rope as far as, you know, they're, they're deciding whether they should have heat tonight or, you know, be able to eat sometimes. So we keep, you know, we're, we're making all these decisions, and, you know, we recently heard, as Councilman Catch said, you know, we're talking about the Piedmont Reliability Project up in the north part of the county, and most of the people we heard from said you need to put these on existing rightaways. You know, we don't want to clear-cut trees, so we're, we seem to be talking out both ends of our mouth here with what we want and how we do it, and also with a checkbook that none of us have, you know, we're, we're just, we're just saying, hey, everybody pay for this.
Councilman Gertel?
Yes.
Again, the resolution before us is only to ask that the titling issues be resolved.
Well, Councilman Marks, the one thing about the titling, it seems to me that that is going to be a process where somehow, I don't know who's doing it, PJM or BGE has got to get, you know, is that with each individual property owner that's anywhere near the power lines?
I would think so.
So they have to go to each person and get a sign-off? I mean, what, what...
I think they would just go through the various things we expect in the legal system.
What, what would we expect in the legal system?
That they follow the agreements. I mean, there's, there's, currently, the language is one transmission line. Work that out. I mean, I think I'm coming to you with a very realistic, very reasonable request. Now, it has nothing to, you know, the undergrounding, I support the undergrounding. Now, it has nothing to, you know, the undergrounding, I support the undergrounding, and, and there is a distinction, by the way, between the urbanized areas and the rural areas, and that has to do with public water, right? That's, that's the issue. I'm only asking for the consideration of the titling issues.
I understand, but that may also take years to do.
We have years until this is-
Well, we, we don't necessarily have years because if it goes beyond '28, we're, we're going to pay 15 million a month.
Well, I guess the rhetorical-
For as long as it takes, which is a lot of money.
Well, the rhetorical question would be then, why did the council, in a seven-to-o vote, ask BGE to, to look at these things, and then BGE comes back and hasn't done anything different? I mean, nothing's been done differently. I don't know.
Councilman Gertl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and you're- You're right, Councilman Marks. This, that did happen. I think the environment has changed now. I, I shared this at a couple of meetings ago, and I think we, as a council, have to be really careful in how we move forward. You know, we, the current environment of our constituents is this. Many can't afford their groceries right now, and they then look at their BG&E bill, and it's heart-wrenching because they can't afford the BG&E bill. And many of our constituents in Baltimore County used to have a federal job, or family member who had a federal job as part of their family income, and they don't anymore. And then one in four, one in five, I don't remember, let's say one in four and a half in Baltimore County is an older adult that's dependent on their social security benefits, and they're worried that their benefits are going to be discontinued. And in the near future, those same families that we represent won't be able to afford a car. They won't be able to afford a cellphone. And some of these things that we take for granted that are affordable now, we're looking into a future where these things are no longer achievable for the people that we represent. So I think we've got, we have to be really careful in how much, in the actions we take that tack on to a family budget that is, is almost unachievable to make that, to balance that budget in today's environment. And it's going to get worse in the days to come. You know, there's some new unknown variable, tariff on this country, a tariff on that country. No, I take the tariff back. I didn't really mean that. Let's do a new tariff. How about that country out there? Let's do a tariff. And every day it's different. So how do we, as a council, respond to that? We have to create predictability right here at the local level because predictability at the federal level is beyond what we can do, although we can, we can participate in some of the discussion at the higher level, but we, we have times ahead that are unprecedented. And so we have to act, and I'm not saying this is irresponsible, I just think we have to double and triple think every action that we do so that we're not adding to the concerns that families that we represent already have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Marks, and then Councilman Jones.
You left out three words, Councilman Potoka, the state government. Yeah, lots of, lots of problems with affordability, and the state government is driving a lot of it.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I am reminded of the resolution we passed a couple of months ago, talking about BGE and asking them, and I said it then and now say it again, you know, I want us to do whatever is necessary to keep the cost as low as possible for the citizens that we represent. I'm looking at a poll that was done by UMBC, and it polled people in Baltimore City, although the sentiments, I'm sure, could go right with us in Baltimore County. It polled what is most important, major issues to the people. Poverty and homelessness is number one. Crime and public safety was number two, and surprisingly, surprisingly, energy bills was number three. That's a UMBC poll, energy bills is number three. Normally, you always would have education up there at the top. Here, we got the number three item that people are worried about is energy bill. So I guess I think it's important that we do everything we can and help out to make sure BGE do whatever they can to keep the cost as low and keep the energy as reliable as possible to the citizens we serve. I think we owe it to them. Thank you.
Mr.-
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Ketch, one second. Councilman Crandall had rung in, and I'll-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make an attempt to try to get us to refocus on this, this resolution. Councilman Potoka, while impassioned, I'm not sure that we need to go into the rhetorics of national politics or hyperbole about pending Armageddon. And we don't need to get into state spending versus federal cuts. Councilman Marks's resolution is a request. It's not a bill, it's a request. And he's asking for these titling issues be addressed. Quite frankly, the recipient of the resolution can tell Councilman Marks and the county council, should this pass, to go pound sand. But it's a, it's a request. It doesn't bind anyone to anything. Let's refocus back on the resolution at hand. With, with an appreciation that we have a lot of constituents that are struggling right now. I will certainly give that concession because I've talked to them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Councilman Ketch.
Yeah, I'll save some remarks for the vote. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We have another speaker-
I was just wanting to get clarification. Is this, Mr. Clark, did, he signed up for Bill 21?
He's right behind you.
Is he here for Resolution 21?
You're here for this resolution?
He also signed up as virtual. He's here in person, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. So he is testifying on Resolution 21?
Thank you, Paulie. Appreciate your testimony.
William Clark.
Mr. Clark.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Clark, thank you. Excuse me. Oh, thank you, Council Chair Erdl and council members for the opportunity to speak in support of amendments to Baltimore County Resolution 2125. We just heard the BG&E representatives say they have right-of-way to the entire transmission corridor. They have, they have asserted to you and the Maryland Public Service Commission that they possess the right-of-way throughout this corridor right now. We in our Kingsville group opposing this transmission line structure at this point have identified title owners who only have one deed from 1930 that permits the building of an electrical transmission line. He just asserted that there will be two transmission lines. Therefore, if the deed, if the title search proves that BG&E does not actually have the right-of-way on that property, the entire project will shut down until such time as either they renegotiate with that property owner or somehow otherwise proceed at additional cost. So this project runs the risk of spending more money on the continuing development of this project right now, when in fact, there are the reasonable beliefs that titles that are part, that are, belong to owners of property underneath this transmission line may prove that BGE does not in fact have the corridor they've asserted to you. And that, the cost that would result from, from the additional expenditures between now and that time will be even, added even on to the, the cost that result from the, what a lot of residents in Baltimore County in our area refer to as extortionary tactics with the RMR payments beginning in, in 2028. People in Baltimore County, landowners in Baltimore County with proper titles and legal contracts with, with BG&E are entitled to their day in court as American citizens, contract law, and other things. So that, I kind of jumped ahead of my prepared remarks, and I don't know how much longer I have, but I would like to say that my wife and I live on Jerusalem Road in Kingsville, where we operate a 9.5-acre horse boarding farm, which is zoned RC5, between Jerusalem Road and the Gunpowder State Park. When we moved from Baltimore City in 19, in 1899, the farm had a three-wire transmission line with one lattice-style tower on a site with 150-foot and two deeds, two deed amendments with BG&E. We have two deed amendments. As a reg, as registered Democrats, we may not always agree with the majority of our residents and elected representatives in our area on all issues, but I have greatly appreciated being able, as part of a neighborhood group, to discuss with Councilman Marks the proposed Brandon Shores Retirement Mitigation Project. I'll refer to that now as Brandon Shores. I was going to say BS, but I decided not to. His participation with us was particularly important because the Brandon Shores Project is a one-and-done project that is implemented, once it is implemented, it can never be undone. The Brandon Shores Project would expand the energy corridor in Baltimore and Harford Counties, which will be, if not already, the equivalent of I-95 energy transmission, and will create a forever energy wasteland within our counties. I shall identify three issues of concern today, but will only address the first one in detail. I want to urge council passage of the amended resolution so that all property owners with right-of-way agreements with BG&E may have an opportunity to exercise due process to examine their deeds and verify that BG&E truly does maintain the right-of-way, that they assert that they have, and that forms the legal foundation per the transmission line expansion from one to the two lines. I urge the county council to recognize and protect the unique rural and historic real legacy in the valley between the Gunpowders, where there are even fewer fire hydrants than Democrats. I'd like to urge council members and the county executive to consider key aspects of the Brandon Shores impact on all county residents and county resources and costs, recognizing the unretractable decision that approval will mean for the 100-plus-year lifetime proposed in the additional 12-line transmissions. It's already been 95 years since the, the first line was constructed. So this is once, I understand, short-term higher expenses because of delays, because of penalties, et cetera. That's, that's pushing everybody to make decisions right now, but this is a lifetime, eternal decision that you're faced with, or the PSC is faced with. But the additional issues that face all of our county residents are the wildfire prevention and cost under catastrophic scenarios. If you think about the 100-year window for that, and the overhead transmission lines carrying twice as much as what they carry right now, drier climates will likely, it can easily be imagined to resemble Los Angeles and Paradise Fires in the not-too-very-distant future, especially given the maintenance that's performed poorly in the Gunpowder State Falls Park and the total absence of fire roads. Second, public health effects on residents of the electromagnetic field emissions, both within the Eastman Areas and well beyond the ROW. I have with me somewhere this little machine. I can tell you right now what we're experiencing with. We're at .05 right now of electric, EMF transmissions. If you walk under, under the power line at my house, this is .05 in this room, if you were to walk under the power line at my house, that number is 11, it could be 11 to 15. This little thing starts beeping at .04, I mean, .4. This got green, yellow, and red. I don't know what it means when it beeps red, but I left it next to my bedside the other night before I went to bed, and it was beeping all night long. I was thinking, maybe I should, people should sue for the BG&E, for the health effects problem, potential effects of cancer or leukemia on children, but I'm thinking of, sorry.
Mr. Clark, you're going to have to summarize because we're, you're at about-
It's my wife.
You're at about seven minutes now.
Sorry about that. But I'm thinking, I should be suing for sleep deprivation. That thing was lit up and beeping all night long, right next to my room. The fourth, the third issue beyond public health, and I think is the most critical one, is that there's an impact to this power line on public safety that I don't believe has been appreciated and, and addressed, either in their proposal, which, and this is a comment I'll be making at the PSC, in their proposal, I think, where there should be particular concerns about the construction of a Batavia Road Farm, Batavia Farm Road location, substation at the Batavia Farm location in Rosedale, knowing in Baltimore County, we experienced terrorists planning for, for terrorist domestic, domestic terrorist attacks in, in October 2022, where a Catonsville resident conspired with a person from Florida to attack substations in Perry Hall, White Marsh, and several other locations in Baltimore and Harford Counties. This is not a scenario that we have to imagine for over 100 years in the future. This is a scenario that's already occurred in this county. So if you think about the location of Batavia Road Substation, it's adjacent to the main line of the M-Track train, train lines and mark, as well as freight goes through that area. It's within 500 feet of I-695, the Baltimore Beltway, and within probably a half a mile or quarter mile from I-95. So such an attack occur on the, on a constructed Batavia substation with such things as were envisioned by the perpetrators, who were now sentenced to serving 20 years in prison. Such attacks being used by Mylar balloons and guns. These are not, these are not weapons that are hard to find. It's not hard to imagine people who, who might perpetrate further destruction like this. But to consider the impact on the economy of this region in the terms of what happened with the Key Bridge last year, this is the kind of scenario that we no longer have to imagine. We experienced it with the Key Bridge, and we've experienced it with, with this.
All right, Mr. Clark.
I'd like to focus if I could.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
You had three minutes, you're at-
Sorry?
You had three minutes to speak.
Very good.
You're, you're at eight and a half.
As far as this resolution-
Mr. Clark, you're done. We, you got to wrap it up.
I will. I want to reiterate my, my support for the, the current resolution, which is simply to, to resolve and allow your, your residents who own property to fulfill their legal rights to assure that they, that they, that their titles are honored as, as, as landowners as in, in the state of Maryland, who, who may, who we, we believe currently have titles that do not enable BG&E to go for one to two transmission lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Clark? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll have to call my wife back now.
You better, you'll be in trouble. All right. So we'll move on from Resolution 2125. We're now on to Bill 1825. Council members, Marks and Ketch, zoning regulations for solar facilities.
So the administration got me a legal analysis today that I asked to be distributed to the entire council, noting where the state government has now asserted prominence over our zoning regulations. Essentially, from what I understand, there are three tiers of classification for solar facilities, and we now only have control over the first tier. We have further discussions going on with the county attorney to see- We have further discussions going on with the county attorney to see if we can even regulate that first tier. So the decision I have to make is whether to pull back the bill or to present a bill that we could vote for, and I'll just stay in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any questions for Councilman Marks?
Mr. Chair, we do have one.
Oh, we have a speaker on 18?
Just one on this item. Rory Murray, who is here in person.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to state, you're still deciding, Councilman, what you're going to do. Right. So I just wanted also to point out, appreciate the conversation related to the amendment that's been presented. So just wanted to, wasn't sure what you were planning to do, so just wanted to make sure I pointed out that we've been working on an amendment that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll just take 30 seconds, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine with the amendment. One thing that I'm debating is, you know, we had hours of testimony on this legislation, and I think if you took out the one property that was of concern, I think most of us up here, if not all, would agree that we have to do a better job of creating distance requirements. So that's kind of what I'm weighing to move forward with the bill, with an amendment. I'm fine with your amendment. Where's the poll hole thing?
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray, how are you? I think you're here on both 18 and 21.
I'll say the same thing for both. I'll keep my testimony under nine minutes. My name's Rory Murray. I'm here on behalf of Lightstar Renewables. As Councilmember Young just said, this is about agrivoltaics. So Lightstar is a solar company that is committed to building farmer-centric agrivoltaics projects in Maryland. So for this bill and for the other solar bill, we would like the amendments to be considered and hopefully moved for this very narrow subset of projects. It's probably less than 1% of the projects that are in the queue in the state. In short, agrivoltaics means a simultaneous use for both agricultural and solar energy production. While you may not like the state's bill that they recently passed, one thing that we did in that bill related to agrivoltaics with the support of Mako and Farm Bureau was to tighten up what agrivoltaics, how you qualify for agrivoltaics. And we clarified that in order to qualify for agrivoltaics in the state of Maryland, the land, which it's a farm that you're saying you're going to keep as an active farm, so you must meet the COMAR requirements to keep it in agricultural use assessment. We've also clarified, listening to different county councils and Farm Bureau, that we wanted to make sure that pollinators cannot be permitted as agrivoltaics projects in the state of Maryland. So we would like to see the definition, if this does move forward, just to be a little bit more clear on those things, just so we're doing right by the farmers and by Mako, who we've worked with for a couple of years now on these types of projects. These projects are designed specifically to protect soil quality and to give farmers an opportunity to bring in a dual source of revenue while keeping their land in active agricultural use. There's really no financial benefit to doing an agrivoltaics project. They're more difficult to permit, because you're permitting a farm plus a solar project. They're more difficult to build. They're more difficult to site. They're more difficult every step of the way. But what they provide, that no other projects provide, is an avenue for a farmer who can't stay on the farm making the money they're making, and they're left with a handful of options. Do I sell, do I lease the land solar, or do I lease it for any other type of development? And this is kind of something that we think, you know, threads the needle of, you can do both. You can continue to farm your land at the agricultural use assessment standards, which are just the same as any other farm in the state of Maryland, but you can also make that secondary income. And hopefully that allows these farmers to keep these farms in production for future generations to come. I've got some other things to say, but that's the basics of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions about agrivoltaics generally. We had spoken about it a little bit, or you had spoken about it a little bit in your last meeting, or, you know, if the council wishes, I'd be happy to find some time to do just a much more detailed presentation of what this actually means. Thank you.
Councilman Potoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Murray, I like to call you Rory.
Yes, sir.
Because I like that name. It's a cool name.
It's named after Rory Sparrow, player for the Knicks.
Oh, wow. Very cool. My son's name is Rory.
Oh, love it.
How does it work, the agrivoltaics? Does the, do the solar panels and the agriculture occupy the same space?
Exact same space. There are some folks, and the reason we tighten up the definition is, some folks, I won't say they're doing anything wrong, but they're bending the intent of agrivoltaics, and they co-locate. So you have 100-acre plot, and 20 acres of it is farmland, and 80 acres of it is solar. What agrivoltaics tries to do is, you do both right on top of each other. And really, the only land that is disturbed at all is where the pylons go into the ground, because the arrays are built much wider, so farm equipment can make its way through. The farmer's the one deciding, what am I going to produce? Hay, soy, commodity crops, whatever, what have you. And then the panels themselves, what makes this a lot more expensive than a typical solar project, they're bifacial dual-access tracking panels. So they follow the sun, but they also go straight up and down, so you can run a combine through. So, yeah.
How does the, what was confusing to me is, how do they, they're both competing for the same sunlight. So does one win, or, like, you see a smaller tree next to a bigger tree, and the smaller tree is never going to get big, because it's, the big tree is acquiring all the sunlight and not letting in for the little tree. How does it work in agrivoltaics?
Yes, studies have shown kind of an opposite effect. The panels create a microclimate underneath the panels themselves, which creates, I'm not a scientist, but slightly more humidity. So there are a lot of crops that do better under the panels, and there's also a lot, because the panels are also really high. But there's also a lot of farmers who like working under the panels better, because it provides some shade for them. From what we've seen from studies from Rutgers, University of Maryland, and others, you know, Europe's got this all over the place, but it's a different soil type out there. The only thing that doesn't work right now is corn.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I'd be happy to share all that data as well. I mean, it's all, it's all science-backed, and, you know, I'll just also mention, Councilman Ketch, you had met with this, with this group I represent about two years ago, and, you know, I'm proud that we don't already have a project in the ground, because we've said since day one, we want to work with the counties. We want to work with the landowners. We want to work with the neighbors, and we've been painstaking in that process to make sure that we're not, we're not trying to just drive something in the ground. We're happy to take the time to make sure people understand what we're trying to do.
And I'm happy that the pollinization issue has been resolved. As far as livestock goes, that's very restricted, isn't that true? I mean, you can't have cows or any large animals like that. What could you have?
You can, actually. You know, we're, we don't have any projects in any states with cows yet, but we haven't found any reason why it wouldn't work. You know, you can build the array and build, you know, like the cow back-scratcher around the arrays in a way that protects the solar array, and it's also high enough off the ground that, you know, a cow's not going to knock it over. You know, we haven't seen it in practice in Maryland, but from the data we've seen from other states and other countries, it really hasn't been problematic.
That's interesting, because I've read, you know, that it's a problem. And while we're on Bill 2125, which deals with prime and productive soil, I've read the Office of Law's opinion and have spoken with a couple other people about this, and like Councilman Marks, I want to hold this bill. What I'm looking into doing, and maybe Councilman Marks, you might want to consider the same thing, is I, I don't know if the Public Service Commission could enact a policy dealing with the issue of prime and productive soil or distance between solar facilities, or whether that would be, the legislature would have to do it. I don't know. I would assume the Public Service Commission would do it, and because any, you know, these solar facilities over 1 megawatt are now basically controlled by the state, I just think that this protection, both your bill and mine, are so important that I think the Public Service Commission, if they would enact something like this, it would be, it would go a long way in resolving the issue you're having and that I'm having.
I'll comment on that, if I may. In the state bill related to prime and productive soils, it doesn't mention them specifically, but it does allow counties that have priority preservation areas, which typically have a lot of Class 1 and Class 2 soils in them. Once they hit 5% of the total acreage of a priority preservation area in that county, they can then say, no more. So it, you know, Bureau wanted 2%, the House of Delegates wanted 100%, and everybody at the end of the day compromised on 5%.
Was that the 937 or 935, whatever the bill number was?
Senate Bill 931, House Bill 1036.
Okay. Got my numbers confused. So anyhow, I, yeah, I do remember reading what you're talking about. So I think that, you know, our county, I need to just take a closer look at this so that we can do something that will have a positive effect of saving our prime and productive soil. So I thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman, again, I want to delay action on this bill for the next two weeks so that I can do some more research, figure out what is the best path to take.
Councilman Ketch, we're not there yet. We're still on 18, but we'll.
Well, I just did 21, so.
There you go. And I think we have some speakers here about 21 as well, specifically for it.
It's a good bill, so, it's a good bill, and I just wanted to have the effect that is intended, and the state bill does water it down. And so, that's why I'm, want to take another look at this and see what we can do to save our prime and productive soil. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Ketch. Mr. Murray, I had a quick question for you. So you said a lot of, I don't know if it's all the time, but it sounds like the agrivoltaics systems follow the sun in that the panel moves. Now, is that, is that always the case, or are some of them stationary?
Every, every farm is, every array is built specific to what the needs of that crop are. If they need to be moved at a faster or slower pace for whatever reason, if they need to be moved straight up and down, so combines are able to come through at different intervals, but they can, whatever the farm needs. We try on every project to let the farmer lead the way on everything. The only thing we try to control is how can we maximize land usage so that they can bring in more revenue through the solar, but also maximize the acreage of farming that they're able to do.
Is that something they can control in the sense of, I'm just making this up, they were growing soybeans, and they wanted one set of, you know, the panels to be in a certain place during the day, and now they're growing asparagus.
Yeah, they would just, they would just work it through, you know, part of this is, because not only are they getting money from the land lease, but the farmer actually pays a stipend, so they become kind of part of the team. They are contracted to farm the land for the life of the project, for the stipend. So they get used to working with the farm plan manager, plus the solar engineering folks, to be able to create plans based on seasons or crops or anything like that. But it's all, you know, pretty highly customizable, which makes the projects more expensive. But the goal at the end of the day is saving farmland, not really making it, they could come in and make regular solar projects all day if they wanted to, but that's not really the intent of these projects.
All right, great. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? All right, we appreciate your time. I guess we're at 1 to Bill 2025, Councilman Marks, parking of recreation vehicles on public roads.
Nothing to do with car parts. This basically transfers the enforcement of parked recreational vehicles from one, from the zoning regulations, to the county code. It allows our police department to actually enforce a recreational vehicle that may be idling along a road for weeks at a time. I had a situation in my district where I just could not get this RV towed because of this quirk in the, in the regulations. So that's what this bill does.
Does this apply to the whole county?
Whole county.
Okay. Is there, let me ask you another question. Is there a way, and Mr. Secretary, this might be for you, is, or both. Is there, is there some way we could add, potentially add, party buses? I don't know about party bus, but like charter, I have some situations where these, these just random, like, it's like a party bus, basically, that's parked, and it's the same issue. It's parked in a neighborhood, and no one owns it from the neighborhood, but it's parked on a public street, taking up three parking spaces, and no one knows who owns it. It looks like they just leave it there and then come back and get it when they're having, and it's also, like, just regular buses as well. Not, not big buses, but like.
Motor coaches.
Like a van bus.
Motor coach.
Yeah.
It seems that that, that's a commercial vehicle that should already be covered by the prohibition on parking commercial vehicles in residential zones. That's already prohibited, and that's something that should be enforceable by.
Or these personal.
Right. By law enforcement.
Right. Although the police seem to be interpreting it as some kind of non-commercial, so I think I need to just press the issue with them. It was just a good question, since we seem to be getting a lot more parking issues in the county where trailers show up, and they're not, they're not for a construction project that's going on in the area, that just someone randomly leaves a construction trailer in a neighborhood and comes and gets it somewhat infrequently, and, but it's like, oh, I'll just pick a public road to have a storage facility. And we're having a hard time responding to it from a police perspective. I don't know if it's because we're undermanned, or we're, we just don't want to deal with it, but it's of constant concern, I know, in my district. So, anyway, thank you, Councilman Marks.
Sure, and in full disclosure, the administration has asked for an amendment that would also add votes to this. And I've also have a request from the developer of Greenlee to place an amendment in here. Greenlee has special, a special section, I guess, in the transportation code, so we'll be circulating that amendment.
And Councilman Jones has a question.
No, Mr. Chair, I would just, I'm just going to add that I believe in the law also, something you can look out for is, just about any vehicle on the street has to move within a certain period of days. They can mark it, and if the vehicle doesn't move, I don't know what the number is, whether it's three days or four days, but they can cite it, any vehicle for not moving within a certain period of time.
Yeah, I believe it's 72 hours, but that's often disputed by the police.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Or they don't want to enforce it, or they, you know, whatever the excuse is at any given time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Ketch.
Yeah, we, if you all remember, the Moncton Road issue with the illegal parking, et cetera, and the towing problem the police have involves time, and that's the issue. And I can explain it to you at another time as to why time is a problem, and it has to do sometimes with leaving a person stranded in the middle of nowhere. But I, so, that's the problem with the police and the towing. And, you know, I'm just surprised that you, Councilman, are tell, you're a real killjoy.
Well, thank you, Councilman Ketch.
Only kidding, only kidding.
Councilman Ketch, does that mean that you're on the party bus?
Oh. Oh, I hope so.
I feel like you are.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's why you're angry.
Only park them in your district, not mine.
Now, I, and I'm, and by the way, I know it sounds like I'm beating up on our police department, I'm not.
No, no.
There's, it's just a frustration of, like, we get a few, we get, we're getting more and more of these every week that we're having to deal with, and it's, it's often in neighborhoods where parking's a premium, townhome communities, things like that, and, you know, there's people that are not from the neighborhood who are coming in, leaving vehicles, and people even have it on their Ring cameras where they'll see somebody drop somebody off, or they drop the vehicle off, somebody else picks them up and they leave, so they're obviously not from, at least the immediate street, anyway. So, anyway.
Yeah, it's a, it's a problem, and know that they, the police are, some of them are very frustrated with it.
I know they are, and I had, I had towing issues in one of my neighborhoods when I first came in as a councilperson, and we worked that out with the executive branch on dealing with getting cars towed quicker than they were. There was some snafu with not, cars not getting towed, that were abandoned, things like that, or not in a timely fashion, anyway. All right, so we'll move on. So, Councilman Ketch, this is your bill, and I know you talked about this, we do have some speakers, it's Bill 2125. Did you, did you want to just move to the speakers, or do you want to...
I, I think, you know, the council knows what it does, because we already had a hearing on it two weeks ago. It basically doesn't allow solar on prime and productive soil, so it's more involved than that, but that's in general what the bill does, and as I said, I'm holding it and will try to work on it to make the whole issue more impactful, basically. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from the members? Ms. Bel Castro, we have a few speakers, they may or may not be here, but...
Yes, our first speaker is John Forgash. Mr. Forgash?
Yes, good evening, everybody. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm pretty good, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for allowing me to speak today. Again, my name is John Forgash, councilmember, and I am the principal of Solar Harvest Energy. And basically, just wanted to, to call to, and provide some testimony on a project that we've been developing for the past four years now, Liberty Road. And it's a project, community solar project, and we started about four years ago, received a special exception on December, in December of 2020. And, you know, it was one of these projects where there was just no opposition, no one came to the hearing, didn't get any pushback. We feel it's a very well-sighted project, community solar project, you know, in an appropriate area. It was, it was approved, as I mentioned, and over the course of the past three years, we've been working with Baltimore County to move the project forward and, you know, get all the required permits and approvals for it. And so, you know, just based upon the bill and what we understand of it, if implemented, the bill would, you know, really just put the, put the project in a very precarious position and would essentially, you know, wipe away, really, a lot of our, our progress and, you know, all the work that we've been putting into the project. Just recently, in February, we received our full development plan approval, and then just this past Friday, actually, we received our grading permit for the project. We're very close as well to pulling our building permit. So, as you can imagine, you know, once we heard that this bill had, had been, had been put forth, is pretty concerning to us, just based upon the history and what we've put in it so far, and just the amount of work that we've done on the project and in the community for it. So, I, at the same time, we'd propose you to consider some grandfathering language that would provide any projects that have been approved on, you know, from a zoning standpoint, to be allowed to move forward, regardless of whether or not this bill still would be, be approved by, by the council.
Yeah, I did get your...
And I'd be happy to get their questions about, about it, or just about our business.
I did get your amendment and the plan for the solar facility. It's in Councilman Jones's district, and I haven't had a chance to get his input, because I don't want to do anything that affects, well, what he thinks, that if he says, fine, go ahead, then I might do it, I don't know. Councilman Jones is sort of, you know...
Yeah.
You do know?
Sure.
Okay. No, really, if he's okay with it, then I'm okay with it.
Councilman Ketch, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think I, I think I lost you there for a little bit. But, yeah, we have, you know, have proposed some language that we feel would be inappropriate for projects that are in our position.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Jones.
Yeah, I guess wanted to let these gentlemen know that I'll be working with Councilman Ketch, and I'm pretty sure we will come to a conclusion that will hold him harmless no matter what, because he has been on this project for some time, and as he stated, there is no opposition to it, so...
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Jones, and I know that Chris DiCarlo is there as well, that's, that's representing us, and has been representing us for, for a long time on this project through, through most of, well, really, since the special exception process, three, three and a half, four years ago. So, appreciate, appreciate you taking the time to listen, and the rest of the council members there do the same for, you know, just to listen to, you know, kind of the position that we're in right now with our project.
Okay, I mean, it's not, we certainly appreciate and understand the position you're in, and don't want to do anything harmful. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you, Mr. Forgash. Ms. Bel Castro, I think we have more speakers.
Yes, our next registered speaker is Monica Leslie. Ms. Leslie, you are on, you may begin your testimony.
Good evening, everyone. I am sharing similarly to the gentleman before me. My name is Monica Leslie. I am representing ECA Solar. I'm speaking on behalf of ECA Solar. We are a solar development company based out of Massachusetts. However, we've been developing multiple solar facilities within Maryland. This bill is going to directly impact one of our facilities that we've been building at the end of Dow Lane in Kingsville. And similarly, we'd be advocating for grandfathering language. The Project Kingsville Community Energy Initiative, which is a 1.5-megawatt solar facility, received its special exception approval in December of 2023. And then, based on that approval, we went forward with purchasing the property, making pretty significant interconnection payments to BG&E, and we have been working with the Baltimore County Development Review Committee for the past 15 months. We have spoken about including grandfathering language with zoning representatives, and tonight I would like to respectfully and expressly request that the father, I apologize, the following language be incorporated to the end of the bill, and shall apply to any project that has not received final, non-appiable zoning approval as of the effective date of this act. The only difference between the grandfather language proposed in Bill Number 1825 is this inclusion of zoning. And just in conclusion, after we received our special exception approval in December of 2023, we felt secure in allocating considerable capital into this project, and we believe that if this rule changes at this stage in the project, it would be contrary to concepts of fairness. Thank you.
Ms. Leslie, sorry. Can you, where did you say this solar project is?
Kingsville. Kingsville, at the end of Dow Lane.
In Kingsville?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
One of the half dozen in Kingsville.
And I'll talk with you, Councilman Marks, about it.
Okay. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker, our final speaker today, is Christopher DiCarlo, who is here in person.
Good evening, members of the council. Chris DiCarlo, Venable LLP, I represent Solar Harvest Energy. You've already heard from John Forgash, who is the principal. I don't have much to add to that, I just wanted to come up here and reemphasize the need for the proposed grandfathering amendment in order to, you know, really protect a project that's non-controversial. We're thankful for the council's consideration of that and happy to answer any questions, so thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carlo? Well, that was quick.
Nice and easy, have a good night.
We'll give your, some of your credit, your time credit to Mr. Clark. Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. All right, I think that may be all for tonight, unless anybody has anything else for the good of the order. Happy Passover to anyone celebrating, and we have Easter coming up quickly, so everybody have safe and happy holidays with families coming up, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.